Roll call, let's see who's here and where we're calling in from. See, Joe? Anyone with you?
No, my dog.
Okay. OJ?
I'm home alone.
Okay. Paul?
I'm home, my wife is in the house somewhere here.
Okay. Steve, are you there?
Who?
Steve Noseworthy, I saw him a minute ago. Alright, we'll call a meeting to order. Put Mark Erma's excuse, Paul, you'll be seated. First item on the agenda, consideration of the meeting minutes from November 11th, 2020. We don't have those done yet. Let's do the meeting minutes from November 24th, 2020. Does anyone have any questions, comments, corrections?
I didn't get a copy of those in my packet that I received, I don't think.
Yeah, Carol sent them a little while ago. Alright.
We should be right behind the agenda.
I'm looking, Carol. I just got it, so. What was the date you're looking for, Jim?
November 24th, we don't have the 11th yet.
Yeah, alright.
Anyone have anything?
This was just for the CIP, correct?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to accept.
Alright, I had a couple of changes in. Should be on page three, it should be page three of four. And then page four should say four of four. And then also.
It does.
Mine does say that.
It does say that.
The set I have doesn't say that, so it must have an earlier set.
Alright.
Then page three or four, the Marlowe and Paris matters. Fire Chief Health Officer, Code Enforcement Officer, first line there, it's underlined. I don't know if your copy is underlined or not.
Nope.
Okay. Paul made a motion to approve the minutes as presented, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
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 Okay, anyone opposed? Alright, that motion carries. Next item, pines detention ponds. We talked last meeting, we didn't want to conduct a site visit. Rick, can you update us the status? You've muted. Joe?
I went to visit the site three times the last weekend, even today. Hello?
Hi, Rick.
So, we, I expected to be, to have that completely shaped up and done. The forbay finished and the outfalls done. We, with that flash flood that we had last week, I'm a little bit behind. By the end of the week, it should be completely shaped. And I think it's ready for a visit. I know Joe's been out a couple of times. But, that four base during that flash flood, that's exactly where it was supposed to. It withstood. And nothing got out of our detention. We had eight pumps running. But everything worked perfect, I was very happy with it, to be perfectly honest.
Okay, and how are you doing with these other conditions, the bonding?
I'm not asking for bond release yet, I want to make sure that the town's happy before I ask for the release.
Okay. Have you provided the maintenance bond?
I thought we could leave some of that in place. I gotta get you, I have the association's in place now, I've turned the association over to the homeowners. And I, my understanding or the way I read it was that if the homeowners, I need to get you a letter from the homeowners that says that they accept responsibility for that. But I'm, I wanted clarification on that, so.
It says there shall be a bond as long as MCCC is responsible for the maintenance and operation of the ponds.
Right. So, the association takes over the homeowners. If the homeowners association takes over, do you still need the bond? Or is there, is their taking it over deficient?
Okay, have they taken it over as of today?
No, they took it over as of, well, let's, let me be more clear. We turned the homeowners association from me running it to the homeowners running it. So that's been completed and the transfer is going over to them. I haven't asked them to take over the responsibility, because I wanted to talk to you guys first to find out what you wanted me to do. My understanding was that they could take over that responsibility, or I could put up a bond. And I didn't know whether my understanding was correct or not.
Okay, I think you had your hand up there.
Yeah, I, this is the first, I can say, this is the first time I'm hearing of this. I, there's a big yellow flag goes up here, I. I would, I would, I would like to defer to Peter. I, I mean, I don't know, before we release any bonds, with the history up there, I just, I just caution, that's all. At this point for any releases. Okay.
I mean, we're just going through the conditions here.
Alright, I'm just, I'm just saying, I wanted to say that, that's all.
Okay, Peter, you have something to add?
Let's see, looking at the notice of decision, there were two bonds called for. The first one was for eighty-two thousand one hundred and sixty-seven dollars, which was for the, for the actual work. And that was provided, and the town has that eighty-two thousand one hundred and sixty-seven dollars. And we have a signed escrow agreement with the applicant. And as Mr. Elliott just said, he hasn't asked for that to be released yet. The second bond is really the one we're talking about, it's called a maintenance bond for thirty-five thousand dollars. We don't have that yet, so maybe once the town's engineer signs off on the work, maybe the eighty-two thousand dollar bond could be reduced to thirty-five thousand dollars. So, Mr. Elliott, just read condition number two, it's a full paragraph, and it talks about the maintenance bond of thirty-five thousand dollars. And it says, "In the event that the Pines Condominium Association lacks proper authority to take on the responsibility and exercise the power necessary to maintain and operate the ponds, that unless and until such time as the Pines condo association does have all necessary authority, the declarant, which is MMC, its successors or assigns shall be fully responsible for the maintenance and operation of the ponds. There shall be a bond so long as MCCC is responsible for the maintenance and operations of the ponds." So as long as MCCC is responsible for the maintenance and operation, the town wants to keep a thirty-five thousand dollar maintenance bond. Once the town is satisfied that the Pines Condominium Association has accepted responsibility, then it looks like, according to condition number two, that's when the thirty-five thousand dollar bond can be released.
It's.
So it appears it's not, we're not ready to release that.
Yeah, and I'm not.
Okay, that's fine. Paul, you have a question?
Yes, I do, and the escrow agreement, it states that the principal fails to complete set improvements on or before November 30th, 2020, the obligation shall determine if some necessary complete set improvements, rework set improvements, repair set improvements, which have failed on the planning board's approval plans and specifications, and the obligation shall be entitled to utilize the principal's escrow funds for completion of the on-site work. But the principal will be responsible. Two thousand sixty-seven, today is December, I don't know.
Ninth.
Ninth, we're obviously beyond the November 30th deadline. The work is still continuing. What responsibilities do we have?
I don't think the planning board has any, I think enforcement of a planning board condition is in the hands of the Board of Selectmen. So the selectman could take the position that condition number three hasn't been complied with, that the project shall be completed by November 30th. And invoke the, I guess. I mean, the purpose of the bond, the eighty-two thousand, is to complete the project. If they're, I don't know if it's completed or close to being completed, I guess the selectman could take a, take a look at that if the planning board wants them to.
Well, I guess my question to go along with that, Peter, then is, and I don't see Ray on tonight, but what, if Ray's there, can he comment on the completeness of this, has he looked at it? Where are we at with that?
I was hoping to see Ray as well, I was just looking for him just a couple of minutes ago.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay.
Put your hand to Jack.
Yeah.
Did I hear Ray is on?
There's Ray, he's there.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm here, yeah, I'm here, yeah. Yeah, so essentially, yeah, the deadline to complete the ponds was, you're correct, it was November 30th. Here we are, you know, December 9th, but at this point, they're well underway in terms of getting close to completion. I would not classify it as substantially complete yet. But at this juncture, you know, the best course of action is to let the developer and the contractor who's working on the job site now complete the work. And then to go through the process of submitting an as-built plan and a construction control affidavit confirming that the the ponds were built in accordance with the design intent. And then come springtime, that would be the time to make sure that, you know, the grass is growing, the slopes are stabilized, and the pond is functioning as intended.
So I have a follow-up question for you, Ray.
Sure.
Give the fact, given the fact that we're now into winter conditions, what would it be? Your assumption that the work will be completed, will be continued until completed and done? And if not, the town will step in, or how does that work? I mean.
No, I would, it sounds to me, and you know, Mr. Elliott can confirm it, but it sounds to me like he's gonna proceed until he gets it wrapped up this season and get it, get it all buttoned up for the winter.
Mr. Elliott, is that correct?
That is correct, and we're almost there. The remaining materials, we, instead of building, instead of building that, the arms out of on-site, we bought process, the process gravel and the riprap are all on-site. It's just a matter of shaping the outfall, any overflow, the, the outfall, it's completed, the forbay is in and completed. Ninety-five percent of the, of the pond itself is dug and shaped. I just got a finish coming out of, it's basically for the overflow of the hundred-year storm that we need to complete, but we'll stay with it. Get it as far as we can now. And if there's anything that needs to be done in the spring, we'll finish it as soon as we can.
Okay, I mean, my concern obviously was for stabilization of the ground, given it winter conditions. But everything is being disturbed now, you're not gonna be able to grow anything. Ray, how do you, how do you feel about that?
We're gonna, can I, can I address that just for a second?
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Our intention is to buy sod and place the sod in position now so that it'll start to germinate early spring. And we'll do, down to the waterline, anything that got disturbed will either have riprap on it, or it'll have sod on it. And, and if there's anything at all that needs to be done in the spring, we'll get it done.
So if I, Mr. Chairman, if I may ask. If I may ask a question, so, so Rick, what, do you have a date certain as to when you're gonna get the, basically be that substantial completion, and I would define substantial completion as the sod is in, the site is all stabilized and buttoned up for the winter?
I, I'm, if we don't get hit with another flash flood, I think we'll have it done by the end of next week.
The end of next week, okay, so that would be the target date then to do a site visit and then sign off on it for the winter?
Yeah, I would say, yeah, anytime in the week after, that'd be great.
Okay. So, so does a bond stay in place? I don't know who I'm asking, I guess, Peter, does a bond stay in place? Both bonds stay in place until that's done, substantial completion?
Yeah, right now, we only have bond number one, the construction bond of eighty-two thousand one hundred and sixty-seven dollars. So, that stays in place until Ray is satisfied that the construction is complete according to the plans. Then, we need to talk to Mr. Elliott and his company about the maintenance bond of thirty-five thousand dollars. They could potentially withdraw everything above thirty-five thousand dollars from the eighty-two thousand the town already has. Once Ray is satisfied with the construction of the detention pond and leave the thirty-five thousand dollars in there, and we can do a new escrow agreement for that amount, or I guess in the alternative, they could assure us that there is an association that has taken responsibility for the maintenance.
So who, who is the one who authorizes the change in that? Peter, is it the Board of, Board of Selectmen, Planning Board, how, how is that converted?
The Planning, the Planning Board, the, the end of condition number one says that the applicant can request the eighty-two thousand bond. Once all conditions have been met from the planning board, the bond shall be released at the discretion of the planning. So, once Ray is satisfied that the work is complete, I would think that Mr. Elliott would request that public hearing so that he can get his bond released and schedule it.
Chairman, do we want to schedule that hearing now?
Well, you can ask for it once the, Ray determines the pond is substantially complete, that would be my, my guess as to how to do it.
I was just trying to get it in the schedule so Mr. Elliott could.
Well, he doesn't know, he doesn't know when he's gonna be complete, so depending upon the weather.
Well, he said he hopes by December 18th. And Ray would then do a site visit the week of the 21st. So maybe if you schedule this for the public hearing in January, and if you don't, if, for whatever reason, they're not ready for that public hearing, it could be continued. But assuming the schedule goes as planned, then a public hearing in January would probably be in order.
Okay.
Is Carol there?
What's that? She's here.
Why? Why don't we just schedule something in January and so that we can get, you know, keep this current and keep it, you know, on the.
When, when is the second meeting in January, Carol?
That'll be the 22nd.
Twenty-second. Will that work for you, Rick, the 22nd of January?
Whatever works, it's fine, thank you very much.
Does anyone else have any questions?
So, public hearing December 22nd at six.
Wait a minute, the 20th.
I mean, just.
I was looking at the.
January 20th, 2021.
One twenty, twenty-one at 6:00 PM. Public hearing on the Pines Condition of Approval Number One in relation to the bond.
Correct.
That's, that's inauguration date, does anyone care?
All the fireworks will have died down, hopefully by 6:00 PM.
We'll be starting.
We'll, we'll humor start off tonight.
Hey, Jim?
Yeah?
When I was over the site today, that place will require some kind of fencing around it. It's a pretty deep pond.
Yeah.
We discussed it last time, nobody was sure, certain what they were gonna put on it, but it will require some kind of fencing. It's pretty steep grade try to come out of it.
Okay, Rick, did you get that?
I didn't really, I, the orange fence we took down while we were running the slopes, does it want that back up? On the, on the, on the, on the ponds. In my opinion, requires some kind of fencing around it. Somebody should get into it, it'd be almost impossible to get out, for young people, or old.
I wouldn't go up.
Hold on. Put your head.
If I'm wrong, I believe the approved, final approval, there is a containment, either guardrail or fencing around that pond, am I not correct?
I believe that's correct.
I think there's a guardrail, but no fence.
Right, there is a guardrail, but there is no fence.
Yeah, I, I, I too have been up there, and I'll just say, of all the time that they've been working on this, these ponds are, kudos, they've, they've made some great progress up there. However, that design, Joe was, Joe was right on point. If somebody gets down in there, it, it's gonna be a tough climb out. And guardrails gonna help. We can't protect people themselves, I got that, but boy, that's, that's a hole in the ground, it really is. Even a dog would have trouble getting out, in four-wheel drive.
Does Ray have any comments on the fencing issue?
I think Ray and I talked about it briefly, he can chime in. You know, we gotta go with what was designed, it's a guardrail, so, as long as it's in, but. I have, I have a suggestion that might make sense. If, if I put boulders that a car can't drive through, and separated by six feet, and then planted trees in between them, it would, it would act, it would make it look better, and it would prevent anybody from accidentally getting down in it. You'd have to make a decision to climb over something or climb through something to get there. I think it would look good, and I think it would help, I think it would help more than a, than a guardrail. A guardrail, a kid can, anyways, it's up to, it's totally up to the board, whatever the board wants, I'm willing to do.
Okay, well, we're already approved with the guardrail, so I don't think we can, we can't make changes without another hearing.
Yeah. I just think, I just, I just throw that out there from a life safety, I know the, the fire chief has talked, Ron's made a point, and I just bring it up, and, and he's got an approved plan, calls for a guardrail, live with it, but I think either a bad decision by adults or kids, when down there next to the water, it could be, that's a steep climb, and I think the pond's probably gonna work, but it's a gonna, it's gonna be a climb up out of there. Yeah, the good news is that it's a three-to-one slope that you, which you can run a lawnmower on, and it looks worse now than it's going to look, it's, in a lot of ways, if you're looking at it now, it isn't completely sloped, the bottom's bigger, and the slope's gonna be more gentle when we finish with it.
Yeah, right. I mean, it's a.
I've said enough.
It, it's a three-to-one slope, it's a three-to-one slope, probably two-to-one at the top there. I'm, I'm sure Ray can chime in on what those slopes are when you look on the, the design criteria here, but if you went in and you can't swim, you're in trouble.
As far, yeah, as far as, I don't have the plans in front of me, but as far as the slope is concerned, I believe it was, it's all supposed to be at three-to-one. As far as the guardrail is concerned, the guardrails for, you know, to, to make sure that a vehicle doesn't enter the ponds, it's not designed, a guardrail's not gonna prevent somebody from, you know, personally getting in there, it's just for, you know, make sure the vehicles don't go down there. And I believe the planning board had betted, had extensive conversation on whether or not a fence should go up around the pond, and I believe the planning board opted not to put the fence there, I could be wrong on that, you'd have to check the minutes.
I believe, I believe you're right, Ray, because it was. It was gonna prevent safety personnel or emergency personnel, hinder them from getting to someone who, if they were down in there, so.
Right, so I think in the final analysis, I think the, what the planning board has signed off on is the guardrail only.
The.
Go ahead, Paul.
OJ, I have a question for you. You were concerned about the plantings that were around there, do you have any concern, given the fact that they won't be going until spring?
Muted.
Are you there, OJ?
Yeah, sorry. I had to find my mouse to unmute myself. No, I've no, no concerns about that.
Anyone have anything else?
Yeah, played a bunch of Wild Roses, nobody go through that.
Alright, we'll see you back here January 20th at 6:00 PM.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rick.
Bye, guys.
Alright, so I'm gonna step down, Joe's gonna be the chair for the next item on the agenda.
And I'm gonna step down, and Tamra's here to be my replacement on the board.
Okay, let the minutes note that.
River.
We can see you.
I couldn't.
The way is waiting on you.
What's that?
They're waiting on you.
I couldn't see or hear anybody, it's like, a blank. Town GM, our holdings?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Joe?
Mr. Matt, go ahead.
This is Peter Malia, who are your board members for this particular case tonight? You, Tamra, Paul, Steve?
Steve on? Did Steve sign in?
Steve signed in, but he's not, there's two pages here I have on it, so. I see, I see Steve Noseworthy on, but his microphone is turned off. So Steve, if you're on, you might want to turn your microphone on, you're muted. Steve, are you there?
So basically, it's Paul, myself, and Tammy. The time being.
Is that a quorum?
Three out of five is a quorum.
I see Steve's name, maybe he's trying to connect to the, I don't know.
Yeah.
His name there.
I see his name, but he's muted, so.
And from last, from the November 11th meeting, we have lost Mark?
Correct.
And we don't.
I don't see him on.
Excuse me?
This is Paul Bowden, I don't, I don't see a mark on.
Neither do I.
We don't have another alternate to step up in his spot?
Nope.
Okay.
At the moment.
So I, we have Joe, Tamra, and Paul, and hopefully Steve.
Should we just, do you?
In the absence of Steve, do we need to ask, Peter, would it be, would it be prudent to ask the applicant if three people are okay for him to make decisions, or do we need to wait and find out what Steve can be on?
You can ask. John, do you have any comments on the number of board members tonight?
I would prefer to give it another minute to see where Mr. Noseworthy is, because I don't know how he would be showing on the screen if he's not there. Somebody have his cell phone number, we can call him, tell him to turn it on. I was just.
Call Jane.
I just sent a text to Steve's significant other to ask her to have him unmute.
Okay.
Let's give him a minute.
She'll tell him.
Which is fine, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with that. Ron, can I just do it, can you allow me to screen share just 'cause, so I can make sure that all my documents are lined up?
You should be able to.
Yep, I got it. Do you want to start with the documents? Well, I just want to make sure that they're there when I call them or need them.
Is Steve on with it yet?
That was me.
I did something. I did something. I still see that Steve is muted according to what I have.
Like Ron's trying to give him a call.
I just spoke to Jane and she's going to call him and get him to unmute.
If anyone can do it, Jane can.
While we're waiting, should we identify the phone numbers and the person that is identified only as iPad for the minutes?
Just, just to update if I can. I just spoke to Jane. Steve, Steve is on the phone listening but is not able to unmute through the phone. Jane will help him do that when she gets home, but she's just leaving little to now. So he is on the phone listening, um, but is, is not able to unmute so that he can speak.
My, my wife just says if you star six on your phone, you can do that.
All right. There you go, Steve. Try that.
Is that Steve?
Oh, he's still on the screen.
Yeah, but he's on his phone, so you gotta find his phone.
But if he were to disconnect from the laptop or whatever he's on and just simply use his phone.
He should be locked in from his phone. He should be showing on the screen from his phone. You can do both. My guys have to do it all the time.
Would, would Mr. Noseworthy have a complete package of all the documents that have been submitted? That might be a question for Ms. Pelosi.
Yes, he does.
Okay. Because, I mean, if, if he has access to all the documents and he can look at what I'm showing on the screen, then I'm fine if he just says, if he can just hear for now.
Well, I think he needs to be able, if he has questions relating as well, so. I mean, if he, if you want him on, you gotta be on both ways.
So I, I've got Steve on the phone. I could put him on speaker so that he can hear and you be able to hear him. He does have the documents that I dropped off this afternoon, if that's acceptable to everybody.
Did he try star sixing wrong?
He did, and it didn't work. I don't know what style phone he has.
Yeah.
But I can put him on speaker and you can do a test, see if you can hear him or not.
That'd be good.
Okay, say hello, Steve. Steve?
Technology.
It's like the old-time seances. Are you there, Steve? Steve, can you?
Look outside, see if Tom's sending a smoke signal. One for yes, two for no.
He put his winter coat on and stand behind and Tammy's window behind her there and make signals.
I was just gonna say, I could bring my laptop two houses over.
And now he's not even answering the phone.
John, I think you're stuck.
He, he did say that he could hear everything, so.
I, I, I'm reluctant, I mean, I'm reluctant to go forward with just three when we have the fourth and it's just a technological matter, honestly.
Can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
We have two other items on the agenda, short ones.
Okay.
Go ahead and see if he'll bring you up at the end of it.
Sure.
If we take another half hour or so, the other two, that might make it easier for you if he answers.
Yeah. Sure, with the understanding that if you get through the one and he's on, and he gets back on, we can get back in line.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we proceed that way.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, let's do so. Jim? You wanna take over the board again?
Yeah, I'll be ready. Give me a second. Next item on the agenda, Remedy Medical Properties LLC, Littleton Regional Hospital. Brenda, Benjamin, and Jennifer Clark, healthcare facility, signage conceptual. Who's here for this?
Thank you, Chair Spanos.
Tammy will be stepping down and OJ will be stepping in.
Okay, so noted.
Well, thank you, Chair Spanos. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
My name is Mark Rodman. I'm attorney at Nixon Peabody and I represent Remedy Medical. And we have a number of folks here today to talk to you about some potential signage in connection with the development of a medical facility a little further down Railroad Street. And I do wanna thank everyone for taking the time and especially Carol for setting this all up for us. She's been super helpful. Just real quickly, I wanna introduce everyone. We have Dave Martin, Executive Vice President from Remedy Medical Properties, Barb Peliquin, Associate Counsel for Remedy, Darryl Phillips, Land Development Manager for Remedy, at the Conway Horizon Engineering, and then also from Littleton Regional Healthcare, Jeff Woodward is the Chair of the Board, Robert Nutter is the President of Littleton Regional Healthcare. We'd love to give you, give Jeff Woodward the opportunity to kind of introduce the signage, which was previously, was submitted to Carol earlier, so hopefully you have copies of it. And then we'll have Dave from Remedy just kinda chime in on a background about who Remedy is. And then we'd just love to hear your thoughts on the potential signage and we had some other questions that we can raise at that time. Does that sound reasonable, Chair?
Go ahead.
Okay, thanks. Jeff, would you mind giving us some insight onto the proposed signage?
I'm good to go. So, yeah, thank you everyone for allowing us to present this. As you know, or will know, this is a major project. We have several great partners involved with us, as you just heard going around the table. I think you all know me. Those who are on the, may not. My name is Jeff Woodward and I'm currently Vice Chair of the Littleton Hospital Board. But if I miss one more meeting, I will become Chair, so you know how that works. But we have some other people. There's Bob Nutter. If you wanna jump on to kinda introduce yourself a bit?
Certainly, yes. Hi, I'm Bob Nutter. I'm the President and CEO at Littleton. And just to give a very quick background, a couple of years ago, we completed a strategic planning process where we actually took a look at the entire region and looked for the needs, the community needs relative to healthcare services and identified Lincoln as a key area that may be underserved from a healthcare. And so we started to do some studying down there and some pretty extensive research and kinda came to that conclusion with the board that we, we ought to look at providing some additional services down in that area. Our principal goals really were to lower healthcare costs and improve access to care closer to. The process, we started to look at the different markets and, or areas within Lincoln and, and discovered this, this facility owned by the Clarks and, and working very closely with Jeff and our trustees and add in and said that would be a great opportunity if that was something that the community. So services that we wanna provide down there would include urgent care, primary care, laboratory imaging, maybe some physical therapy, occupational therapy, have those types of things, as well as some surgical services that we can area and potentially other things. We haven't fully defined all the services, but what we do know is that those were the needs that we identified in our, in our community.
And thanks, Bob. I'll just jump in, you know, as it's, it's LRC's goal to provide the region with high-quality, affordable healthcare and this project will certainly do that for our, for our goals as, as providing what our North community needs. We do have the property under contract, but at this point, we're on hold until we get the signage issue worked out. Obviously, I think you guys know that the piece of property we're looking to purchase does not have any frontage to Main Street. So that's really the issue. We're talking about how we get signage down on Main Street to let people know that these medical facilities are up there with one that LRC will put in and also an urgent care. I'm sure as a community continues to grow, we all know that the Lincoln area does need high-quality healthcare and we intend to bring that to the community. So we've sent four slides on to you that I think you have. In slide number one, if you have that in front of you, depicts the piece of property that Clarks own that we have under contract. And then down in front is another section in red which shows circles kinda around Rogers Ski Outlet, which is another piece of property that the Clarks own. Then Clark currently has a sign where the arrow points to for Hobo Railroad. And he's agreed with us that if we move forward with this, we could replace his sign with the sign that you have as Exhibit Two. It'd be a sign there that shows the facilities which are located at the back of the property. So Ben has agreed to allow us to put the sign on his property there and replace the Hobo sign currently there. It's kinda blocked out by trees. The other slide, which is Exhibit Four, which shows two long skinny slide, skinny signs. Working with DOT, it takes some time to get through, but we're working with DOT to see if we can probably put signage on DOT right-of-way right by McDonald's, right across from the empty road to the facility. And our team is working through that process with DOT. Again, that's quite a process. We've also contacted the owner of McDonald's. He's very receptive to us having something on his property. But unfortunately, the survey shows that the setbacks really almost bring his property into his parking lot. And so that signage on his property really wouldn't be very visible to people entering the community to know that these facilities are there. So the goal is to look to you guys to see what we need to do to get permission to put the sign up right behind the back of Rogers Ski Outlet parking lot on Ben's, Clark's property. And two, if your suggestions are, we might put signage down on Main Street to show the medical facilities exist for tourists or any guests coming into the community driving by, you're looking for those facilities. DOT process takes quite a while, but our team is working on that. But I think the rest of our team have a few more questions about, you know, what, what is needed for us to move forward to get these signs in place.
Okay, so I believe the sign ordinance does provide for waivers after a public hearing.
Well, and then there's the integrated sign plan section too. That might be wrong.
I lost you, Carol.
I'm, I'm not hearing Carol.
No, she's gone for a moment.
I think I pulled a cable out.
I'll check on her.
Jim, I get a suggestion.
Go ahead.
The lower half of McDonald's parking lots in North Woodstock.
Right.
Which is totally different zoning area for signs than Lincoln, less stringent. So the little part of parking lot at McDonald's is in the town of Woodstock. We make it easy for them to get a set on, put in a property, except for the fact it was a 500 feet of an intersection of 93 under the grandfather, under the Lady Bird Law in 1968, that had given permission for the Fed, for the federal and state highway to do so.
Okay. Paul?
Jim, I just barely got this information tonight, most of it. So having a chance to take a look at the zoning regulations, see how many off-premise signs are allowed and not allowed, where these signs are permitted to be. Does anyone have any, I guess I'll be looking for Carol to see whether.
Carol, do you have a hand up?
I can answer that one.
Hold on, hold on, one at a time.
I'd like, please, I'd like Carol to, to tell us what's allowed and what's not allowed currently, so we know.
Okay, so OJ had his hand up first.
I just, I mean, I'm just gonna read. So it, the, according to our, our sign regulations, businesses located where an onsite sign would not be visible from main roads are allowed one off-premise sign by special exception with the ZBA determining whether the, the business is not visible from the main roads. So right, right there in the, in our rules, it, it, it says that, that, you know, if it's determined by the ZBA that it's not visible from a main road, that, that a special exception can be granted.
Well, so if I'm looking at, I don't know what exhibit it is, there is a proposed off-premise sign by the Clark property by Dave Rogers and then that would be one off-premise sign and then there's a proposed NHTDOT directional information sign that would be, resume another off-premise sign. Those are the only two, the only two signs that you're looking for, is that?
Correct.
So what word, so then what the applicant would have to be to apply to the ZBA for a special exception for the other off-premise sign?
It'd need two, because you're only, you're allowed one. You can demonstrate.
And I, I only received, I only received this one. Sure, this is where this will.
That's behind Rogers parking lot, Ben Clark's property.
Okay. So the one that was proposed by the DOT, Jeff, what does that look like? I, I, I'm sorry, but I don't have that in front of me.
It's, DOT's rules are, I think it's a four-foot by nine-inch sign that is a directional sign that you can use through the DOT, which are located in their right-aways. And so that sign is really just a four-foot long by nine inches high. And two signs, one would say medical facility, the other one would say urgent care, just to direct people to, you know, the medical facilities on site. And then the one behind Rogers would be the sign you have, which would then probably say something about, you know, White Mountain Healthcare, Littleton Regional Healthcare and/or the name of the potential provider for the urgent care. So those would be more depicting of who's there. And the one on the main road would really be your typical DOT healthcare, you know, sign type thing.
Would there be any lighting on these signs, Jeff?
Not on the DOT one, probably on the one at Rogers' property.
But only one of them is gonna be off-premise once the project's completed.
Yeah, well, I mean, technically, the one that's behind Rogers is actually Ben Clark's property, not part of the property we're purchasing, but he's allowing us to put a sign there. But his property, the, the other sign, the other photo that depicts the property we're buying is way up back, you know, where the, where he cleared a new parking lot for the, the ice castles when they were parking there. And so that really has no visible signage, no visible view from Main Street at all.
Yeah, I mean, it is not.
We also have the ability to use the integrated sign plan.
Right.
Which is on page 76 of the land use plan ordinance. And it says, due to the fact that the town has multiple occupancy properties such as office parks and shopping centers, as well as unconventional developments such as tourist attractions, have special sign needs. And this section set out an alternative procedure for the approval of signs on these properties for added flexibility for properties within the general use in the Village Center District. So that would allow for, may permit up to 50% or more, more signs or up to 50% more aggregate footage than is required. may permit up to 50% or more more signs or up to 50% more aggregate footage than is required by the ordinance within the general use of village center zones. So you could, you know, you could approach it from the integrated sign plan like we did with Jean's Playhouse a long time ago.
But does that?
Go ahead, Paul.
Carol, Carol, does that just talk about the size of the signs or whether they are off premise or not?
My my memory was that it included off premise signs.
See, I don't have it.
With the, we certainly did that with Jean's Playhouse because there are several signs for off premise.
Well, we had some issues with Jean's Playhouse and their off premise signs. That's why I asked. And they didn't integrate a sign plan, so. I think we need to clarify that so that the applicant knows.
Hold on, Joe has a question.
If you look on the map, the lower parking lot of McDonald's and property is in North Woodstock. They could put the sign in there, which is a few feet shorter than the other one in Lincoln. It would be exempt from Lincoln's sign ordinance. The DOT lets them put it within 70 feet of the interstate. That would solve one of the problems right there. They wouldn't have to come into Lincoln if they could put another piece of property that's in the North Woodstock side. The North Woodstock sign ordinance is much less stringent than ours.
Jeff, have you looked into that?
No, we haven't. No, we're working through DOT to have one right across from the entrance. But we'd certainly happy to look at that situation as well and and where that's located and where the boundary is for North Woodstock. We just want signage down on Main Street so that obviously tourists and people, I mean, the local community is going to know we're there, you know what I mean? It's not, it's obvious, but people who are driving up or tourists who come into the community and spend the week there, you know, and have something happen. It'd be nice for them to realize that those facilities are there, not drive a half hour down the road to one or up the road when there's one right in town.
You could also petition the DOT to put a blinking light over that intersection. To make it more noticeable.
Paul.
Yeah, so Carol, I have a question about content neutral signs. And looking at this, how does it apply?
Well, as you know, we haven't updated the sign ordinance.
Correct.
So it's it's not going to matter whether it's for a it's for a hospital or health facility or anything else. You know, we're just about the size of the sign. We're talking about freestanding signs.
So my point truly is that if if we almost don't have a sign regulation because of, we haven't adopted or changed the one we have. Should we even proceed with this?
You can still regulate the number of signs.
Correct. But I mean, you know, the where and without and the content. I mean, I don't want to hold this applicant up because of that. So I mean, if if we really are in limbo right now, should we not just allow the the app, tell these guys that until we can straighten our sign ordinance out as long as they're low, low visible signs. And they're in the locations, they're not looking to put up some big 60 foot monuments. I mean, they seem to be pretty standard signs.
Yeah, the DOT sign would be non-descript. There would really just be like medical facility and urgent care. You know, it's not going to be depict who's there. And one of Rogers would then depict who's, you know, what facilities are up there for people.
Right, right, correct. And that's what I'm saying. I mean, the town hasn't gone through and revised any of their sign ordinances yet. And with the content neutral signs challenge, I would hate to hold hold up something like this based on a couple of small signs.
The community does need it.
And I feel reading the ordinance, it sounds like the one that would be on Ben's probably behind Rogers parking lot would conform to that it's just a matter of if the town would allow us to put up without, you know, going against any ordinance you have, put up the one on the potential right away DOT property, if they allow us to put it there. Looking at their regulations, does seem like we would be allowed to do that through their process. They do have in their documents stating that this type of sign is possible on the right aways.
So.
Okay.
Jeff, does it say anything in the state regulations with those signs that that the DOT signs have to comply with local sign ordinances? Because right now the DOT can put up a pedestrian crossing, you know, no U-turn. They can put up whatever signs they want in their right of way. And this town has nothing to say over them. Is there anything about those signs that that somehow require town approval or you know, conforming to our ordinances? Or is it just like any other DOT sign?
Yeah, not that we've seen it. Just their signage ordinance just says it can only be four feet by nine inches. Is all is their ordinance says, it doesn't say that has to be, you know, run through the town as well. I mean, once they get permission, put up, once you get permission to put on their property in the right of way, you can do it. It's just a matter of if the town's not going to say, well, that's two off premise signs are causing issues, then we're we're prepared to move forward to continue. Look at DOT, we'll look at the, look at the North Woodstock borderline as well and see where that is. And then again, move forward with the permits to put in a sign behind Rogers parking lot on Ben's property.
Well, just speaking from my experience of a sign in a town other than Lincoln, that that the sign I was involved with had to comply with the, you know, the town's ordinances. But then there was a DOT sign exactly like you're talking about that the town had no control over. We never had to fill out a sign permit. They didn't ask. They knew it was there. It was not in their jurisdiction. And I'm just wondering if that's the same case here. This is, is a DOT sign directional sign within the jurisdiction of our sign ordinance? I would guess it's not, but I don't know the answer to that. I don't know if Peter might weigh in on that.
I think that would solve your problem really if that was, that was the case.
Right. I mean, if I could comment, Mr. Jeff, I mean, when you get off the exit 32 ramp, there's a sign there that gives all sorts of business information. And that that has never come before the planning board. So, I mean, it appears tonight that all we're here to do or the applicant wants us to do is to give them a indication of as to whether or not they think what they're proposing is acceptable. I would think that if we polled the board, it might be relevant to be able to get, you know, allow the applicant an idea of so that they can perceive with what they're doing. Because.
But they would have to go to the ZBA for the special exception for the one behind Rogers.
Uh, that's, that's, no, they're allowed one off premise signs. I'm not sure you need to do that.
Can I just, Carol? Did we just say that the off premise had to go to ZBA by for a special exception?
That's what our bylaws say. No, that any off premise sign.
I thought you're allowed one. I think you're allowed one. We'd have to look at it. That's what I'm saying. I didn't have a chance to research, but I believe you're allowed one off premise sign depending on the square footage of the building. So.
The the bylaws specifically state that tourist attractions are allowed one off premise sign by special exception. Okay, any other business is only allowed if they're not visible from main roads and they do have to go through the ZBA. I don't think it's going to be a problem. I mean.
Yeah, I wouldn't either.
ZBA says no to this. I, that would be.
I'd be amazed.
That would be, I'd be amazed and that would be a problem. I don't see that happening. You know.
Well, we can't, we can't say what the ZBA will be.
Right, we can't speak for the ZBA. Joe, do you have a question?
Has been, I haven't been chair of the board for 25 years in the ZBA and all the state committees have classed have taken. ZBA is a, is in a pop off albricks to for regulations to make exceptions when it's needed as common sense dictates, not just per ordinance. In this case, I think the ZBA would be, would approve, I can't speak for them.
Right.
But it'd be very amiss if they refuse it.
Chair Stanis, may I add a few?
You may, go ahead.
So it was the applicant's intent to have to go ahead and get a special exception from the ZBA for the off premises sign. And given the very skinny corridor where the existing sign is that the new sign would replace, it's very likely that it's wherever we put a sign, it's going to be in the setback. Because it's so skinny, I'm not sure if it's the side or the front or all of them, quite honestly. So we fully recognize that and we want, we're seeking your insight on not only that, but what we've shown you today as far as size, design, materials, location. Do you have any concerns or any insight that you can give us about lot 16 in particular, like is, would you be okay approving a sign of that size? Look, you know, I mean, generally in that area, given that it's going to be replacing an existing sign. It's somewhat adjacent to an existing stop sign. And, you know, it's on a portion of railroad street, which quite honestly is right on the line as to where the class five road becomes a private right of way. Those are all sorts of odd characteristics of this location that we kind of wanted your thoughts about.
It's just only conceptual. It's not binding on the board for the parties, but I don't see any issue with it. Does anyone else have any questions or concerns about it? Paul.
The only concern I can see is, as I said earlier, was depending upon the lighting you had there. I know there are some residential properties right by that, as are depicted in your plan. So if you were cognizant of that, I don't see why you couldn't perceive the way you were going. But you know, there are some residential properties right off of that corner. So, you know, you want to be, you know, you don't want to have some glaring lights on a sign that while they're trying to sleep.
Yeah, no, I would think the signage would would be, again, because the winter and snow would probably be off the top of the sign, you know, a couple of spots pointing down on the sign. Which really don't spread out past the sign, which most signs in town have the same type of thing.
Yep.
And we could certainly look at hours, you know, putting that on a meter so that they, urgent care closes at nine o'clock in the evening. Maybe at that point, 9:30, we close that light off or nine o'clock, we close that light off type of thing. We could certainly do that. Same thing in the morning.
I don't see anything other than that.
I can't see closing light off. It'd be open 24 hours a day.
Well, the urgent care. Yeah, urgent care would probably 12 hours a day.
12?
Yeah.
All right.
I have one more question. I'm just to be crystal clear, the the applicant's up against some timing deadlines whereby it's a strong a strong liking to try and get the signage rights signed up before the site plan approval. And I know it's a little weird because in that way we would not be able to use the integrated sign plan portion of the ordinance. And we're wondering about the timing of things. Do you see any issues with if we have got special objection and the ZBA relief, if any, and got the sign plan application set up with Carol? How does that dovetail in with the site plan application? Is there, is there any unknown negative effects about trying to get the signage rights done prior to the site plan application?
I don't see an issue, but you know, some of us can raise concerns during the public hearing about the signage, lighting, et cetera.
If I could.
Paul, go ahead.
But if I could comment on that also, Jim, I think that your comments about the public are are not really important in this regard, only because when you go to the ZBA, the public also has an opportunity at that point to to voice their concern. So as long as you went to the ZBA, any public or abutters would be notified and they would have an opportunity at that point at the ZBA to have their concerns known.
The one sign, no, the off premise.
Correct. But I think that would give you an indicator of what you're up against. So I think, you know, I really don't think you're going to have any issues. You're not looking at big signs.
Joe.
The sign on the right of way is basically a generic sign, it's a directional sign, which doesn't fall qualify in the regulations. Now that it says medical facilities next right or next left. That would, on a state property, there'd be no problem.
It's plain plain vanilla sign.
Yeah, that's what, that's the one the right away would be.
Well, I'm since we used up all of our time. Thank you so much. Carol, I'm going to follow up tonight with a couple of specific emails on timing. But again, thank you to the board and for listening and have a great night.
Thank you. Hope to see you soon.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. I think we're comfortable, you know, kind of continue to move forward and we'll work with DOT to try and get that sign across. And at the end of the day, I think everyone wants that sign there so that people know that medical facilities are there for the community. So.
Great. All right, good night.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Bye now.
All right. Steve knows whether you're back, you signed in?
He was.
I saw him, but all right, let's go on to Muffy Copenhagen DBA R I G K Inc. and DBA Gordy's Restaurant Office Condominium Deck for outdoor seating and bathroom addition.
Hi, thank you. Thank you for letting me join in. Since I spoke with Carol, we have found out that we cannot deal with a bathroom addition where we're, where we talked about it. So that's off the table. The only thing we're hoping to do is to add additional decks seating, which was obviously in good weather on the southwest side of the building, facing the building to the right. The the new deck would be about 490 square feet. It would not take any parking spaces. It would take and change it to limited common area. We just received permission from the Depot condo association at our annual meeting that we can do this. It would be an outdoor deck. And the way we do it at Gordy's, if we use the deck, we don't use some of the seats inside. So we're not really adding capacity to the building because we don't have the staff to add another section. So our hope is that we could add a deck that looks very much like our front deck. About 10 feet wide on the back, on the side of the building.
Yeah, the threshold for her is 500 square feet. So initially, she was going to be with the bathroom. She was going to be slightly over the 500 square feet. And that's why we were, I suggested that she come to you for a conceptual and discuss whether or not you would consider waving. Because this, because of the COVID-19, they wanted to expand in the springtime, in the summer, their outdoor seating. And, you know, so there, there is that circumstances that's been allowed in other parts of town and subject to the COVID. But but because the bathroom is no longer in play, it would be an addition of less than 500 square feet. So we don't think she would have to come before you for site plan review anyway. But she thought she would just run this idea by you and see if you saw any difficulties.
These are permanent seats, right? They're not, they're not like the COVID outdoor seating was only temporary.
No, these would be, this would be a permanent, a deck like we have on the front of the building with probably four more tables. Or depending on whether they're twos or fours out there. And what we typically do is if we have a station that's the deck, we close the station inside because we don't have enough staff to cover both. So it really isn't adding to the capacity.
Okay, anyone have any questions? Paul?
Yeah, I do. I understand what Muffy's saying. She has a great place there. But, you know, if Muffy decided ever to sell that place, someone else with more staff could fill up all the restaurant and the outdoor seating area and subsequently have more seating, more cars, more people. So, I mean.
Well, but then if it rains, they all have to go inside.
I don't know how we take this because we have to make sure that it goes with the building. So the approval that we're giving goes with the building. So how do we, how do we make sure that if you're using the out, the added outdoor capacity that no one's going to be in the indoor capacity, that's, how's that done?
Well, she's running a restaurant. If it starts to rain, all those people have to go inside.
That's why we leave it in place.
Carol, I understand that. If it's a beautiful sunshiny fall day and everybody's there and it's not Muffy that owns it, it's someone else. It becomes an issue with the parking. It becomes an issue with the seating. It becomes an issue with everything. So I'm not trying to dissuade anyone. I just want to. I'm not trying to dissuade anyone, I just want to make sure that we don't have problems later on.
Well, but it's less than 500 square feet, so she wouldn't have to have a site plan review anyway.
And we did, they did block off, we have a few more parking spots now because we moved a shed last year. So realistically, we have five more parking spots on the side of the building than we ever had. And the most we would have, five tables.
Julie, you had a question? Go ahead, Joe.
Well, adding the outside seating that Paul was talking about, there's no difference in allowing us to have pub 32 outside seating at their restaurant. So what's the difference? When he came before us two years ago? Suggest we do a
Well, what Carol's saying is she doesn't have to do anything with what's concerned.
Yeah, when I, when I put her on the agenda, we thought she was going to be over 500 feet, so.
I'll make, pass over this, do the fact that it's under the 500 square feet.
So does that mean we just go ahead and do it and make sure it's under?
Get a land use permit.
What is it?
You just got a land use permit.
And I get that from your office?
Yeah, through Carol.
Through Carol.
We have a motion.
All right, is there a second on that?
Okay.
Paul, so basically we're making the determination she does not have to come in for site plan review or apply for a waiver of site plan review.
Because it's under five, because it's under 500.
Under 500 square feet of impervious surface. All right, OJ seconded? Yep, yep, all right, any other discussion? All in favor of that motion, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? All right, you're all set, good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, my friend. Yeah.
Thanks for all you guys too, bye bye now.
Thank you. All right. Steve knows whether you're back?
I don't see him, anybody else see him?
Oh, I see there's a phone number, 348, is it 8733?
He's on, but he's muted. John, what do you want to do?
Can you hear me now?
Oh, yeah.
Hey, there you are, Steve. I guess.
Steve's here. Can you see him? I can hear him, he unmuted himself.
Go right now.
Okay.
What the heck was that? Oh, Joe.
He's on.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can hear you.
We just need to hear you.
My dog just has to go to the bathroom.
All right, I recuse myself. And that Steve Tammy is going to take over for OJ as well.
Correct.
All right.
Joe left.
Dogs have to go to the bathroom.
Did we just lose a board member?
Yeah, we lost the chairman.
He'll be right back.
All right.
He had to let his dogs out, I think.
All right, it's okay.
No, just a name, like Ray Corver.
I think the dog just ran away.
Hey, I'm back.
All right.
I had to take care of a disaster, otherwise I'd have to have a holding point in my kitchen.
So who do we, who do we have on from the board? We have Joe, me, Tammy and Steve?
Yeah.
Good.
Can you still hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, yeah, B, okay.
Okay.
Everybody on?
Everybody's on.
Yeah. Motion open a hearing for GMR Holdings.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I can start now, right?
Correct.
Okay. For the record, my name is John Springer for the African GMR. I'm joined with by Peter Cook, who is the project manager. We also have various members of our team. RF engineer Martin Laven, Audrey Clum did the balloon test and also environmental work. And the, I'm going to pick up where I left off, and I guess what I'm going to do is I'd like to address some of the new submissions that we sent in and also respond to some of the other people. And then briefly go through the conditional use permit criteria and review criteria, although the latter will be very brief. I'm assuming that at this point, everybody on the board has had a chance to read our we submitted way back. Also that board and interest members of the public had a chance to see our latest submissions. The
Excuse me, I just got, I just got your latest submissions tonight. So as a board member, I have not had a chance to there was some stuff that was emailed to me and then it came hard copy today, late this afternoon, John. So if I'm behind the eight wall a little bit, it's because I haven't had a chance to review everything.
Okay, well, I'm going to hit the high points and I'm going to put most of them or some of them up on the screen anyway, and hopefully we can cover the bases that way. I, I will note for the record that the town's RF consultant, Piegassek of IDK Communications submitted his report, I see his name on the screen, I assume he's here listening. I don't, I assume everybody on the board got a chance to review that report. But the summary of Mr. Piegassek's report is that there is a coverage gap in the town of Lincoln for AT&amp;T in the areas of Route 93 and Daniel Webster Highway, which is what our RF report said. He also said that the proposed site that we're here for today at 120 feet provides coverage to those areas. So we see his report as confirming what we had submitted, AT&amp;T had submitted. That does not surprise me. I'm not going to belabor the point, but it does AT&amp;T no good to come in here and not be accurate regarding the coverage gap and in the coverage footprint of the site. The board, one of the submissions I had done was about the, it had three items in it. One was the noise level for the proposed generator. There was a question last time from a board member about the noise level. We provided the manufacturer's spec sheet for the proposed generator. That generator with the level two sound attenuated enclosure, which we will be using, means that the generator, when operating amidst a sound level of 71 dBA at a distance of about 25 feet. And I'm going to try to pull up the first document. And you should see the Clum environmental report here, let me Well, there's the spec sheet for the generator. Can everybody see the spec sheet on the screen? Okay. The one I want to point to in particular is the, the noise level which I submitted. Honestly, I just took this off the internet. But at 70 dBA, they have some comparisons there and it's right there. And a passenger car at 65 miles an hour at 25 feet is 77 dBA. And that is significantly higher than what our generator will be producing because the, as you see here, the dBA scale is not arithmetic, it's geom, geometric if I get that correct. But 80 dBA is twice as loud as 70 dBA. So this this generator, we think will not be noisy. And we think that responds to the board's question quite well. The second issue, there was a discussion last time about how to protect the trees or whether we should protect the trees on the small mole. And we submitted a revised sheet Z3A. And I'm going to try to turn this around for you. I don't know if I can zoom in any better than this, but hopefully everybody on the board at least has seen the revised sheet 3A. And what we did, and unfortunately this does not show up real well here, but we have spoken to the landlord. He was willing to extend the lease area. And so we are proposing, there's the monopole right there, I'm going to try to circle it, the monopole is right there, you're not, probably not going to see it that well. The extended lease area is this crossed, cross hashed area right here. And I'll cross it a little there. That's basically the knoll. That's where all the tall trees are. And he is agreeable to extending and GMR is agreeable to extending the lease area to include that. So will be part of GMR's I'm sorry? I, I think we lost Mr. Shinnard.
He was either talking to his dog or his wife, I'm not sure.
I didn't even know what he said, but I hope, I, I, I hope the tone's not directed at me. I'm going to pause because I'm nervous about, well, legal issues, so just pause here. There he is, okay. So the, this area here is the extended part of the, the lease area, it will be under GMR's control. The landlord agrees to that. And in addition to that, we have prepared a first amendment to the lease. And that should be showing on your screen right now. And what we are proposing, this would be an amendment to the lease and if you look at it, it says basically that area, that extended area will be a no cut area. We won't remove any trees or vegetation except for if they're dead or dying or pose a problem. We haven't gotten that signed yet because we wanted the board to see it. I don't know if the board's attorney has language, we're willing to do this, willing to talk about this language. I think this covers the base pretty well. If everything else goes well for us tonight and we get a conditional approval, we would certainly make it a condition of approval that we have to execute this sign, or we have to execute and submit a copy of this lease amendment to the board. And as I said, if, if the board or Mr. Malia wants to, you know, tweak the language, we're happy to talk about that. And again, I, I would ask that that be done as a condition of approval if we get that for. I would note on the revised sheet 3A, let me let me get rid of my scruples here. The if we can go this route and if we get approved, and I'm not making any assumptions, but if we get that, we had proposed landscaping at the top of the retaining wall, so to speak, and I'm going to circle the circles or circle the trees right there. Your ordinance requires landscaping, we put it in there. If we now control the knoll area and it's a no cut easement, we would respectfully suggest that those trees really aren't necessary. They were, in our view, a protection in case the landlord did do something to cut the trees up there, it would provide some visual barrier. We would respectfully suggest that if this gets approved and we put in the no cut area, it's an unnecessary expense, in our opinion. If we have to plant trees there because that whole area is vegetation and trees to begin with. So we would ask for the board's consideration of that. I would also note, the last hearing or two hearings ago, we were asked to show a clear representation of the fall zone on a plan. We tried to do it last week, our last meeting didn't really work. We put it on this sheet. Hopefully everybody can see it now, the dotted circle is the fall zone area. Speaking of the fall zone, we also submitted a stamped letter which should be on your screen now from Belmont Structures. It's a stamped letter from an engineer. It talks about how the tower can be engineered and what happens in case of a failure. And this may be one letter, I don't know if everybody on the board had a, had a chance to see this, it's a lot of legal, excuse me, it's a lot of engineering speak, if you will. The conclusion, the most important part, in my opinion, is this paragraph right here. And what that paragraph says is, this pole can be designed so that any failure is going to result in a bend or a kink in the pole at the 75 foot level. It's not going to, it, it's not going to fail by a free falling pole, it's not going to topple over like, you know, a tree being cut down at the base, so to speak. Instead, and I explained this last time, this letter does it better than I can in engineering speak, but the, the only failure that this pole is going to undergo, if it does anything, is a bend in the pole or a buckle in the pole. They will engineer it so that the buckle will happen at the 75 foot level, above ground level. They can do that by making the bottom 75 feet too strong, if you will, or over strengthening that part. That means with a 120 foot pole, there's a bent portion of the pole and that's only going to be 45 feet. And the importance of that is the landlord's building, which is the only structure within the fall zone, is 55 feet away. So even with a failure, quote unquote, the bent portion of the pole will not overhang the building. And so we, we confirm or we stand by what I said last time, which is these poles are safe. That the fall zone, with all due respect, should not be, or I should say, the ordinance section of the fall zone requirement should not be used to deny this application when we have the landlord's approval and we have engineered the pole like this, as I just explained. There were also additional comments from the North Country Council Planner. There were also additional comments from the North Country Council Planner. From the scenic byway chair, from White Mountain Attractions Association. And I believe Ms. Spanos, there may have been two comments from a Spanos family member. But certainly there was one with email pictures. I'm going to address all of them. And I did a written submission regarding those submissions by those parties. The first question. That was raised and this came from North Country. It said, what types of radio frequency service could be expected at the tower built in the proposed location at a hundred feet without the additional twenty feet? Under the requested conditional use. And our response, and I said, I did this in a detailed written response, but we, I I just wanna be clear, we are not going to build a one-hundred-foot pole. On those plans where the monopole is indicated on those plans. We think that's extremely unfair. We suggested a one-hundred-and-twenty-foot pole precisely to protect the trees, we could have come in at a hundred feet on the knoll. At's a permitted height and nobody would be able to say anything. The reason we are asking for a hundred-and-twenty feet where we are is to save those trees. I won't belabor the point anyway or anymore, but I just don't want there to be any misunderstanding. The second question was whether it would be realistic to think other carriers will want to co-locate their equipment at the lower levels on the proposed pole. Instead of constructing their own tower. I think it's a fair statement to say the the concern behind that issue is that. At a hundred-and-twenty feet, if you have four co-location slots, the lowest slot is at like eighty feet. Cause you need ten feet of separation between each co-location slot. Co-location slot equals an antenna array for another carrier. And as I did a, as I said in our detailed submission. The town has a very restrictive ordinance in terms of height, a hundred feet is is just about the lowest I've ever seen, most communities allow a hundred-and-fifty or a hundred-and-ninety. As in permitted areas. However, Lincoln has the right to make that choice, there's no question about it. The law is clear, the towns or municipalities can decide where to set that limit, if you will, and where to set the permitted height, however. Courts and the FCC and carriers all recognize there's a trade-off there. The advantage to doing a hundred-and-ninety-feet permitted height is you get fewer towers in town, there's no doubt about it. And you get better co-location slots because if somebody's forty feet from the top of the pole, they're at a hundred-and-fifty feet and that's a pretty good height. In, as is right, said, you know what, we don't want a hundred-and-ninety-foot poles, we want a limit to a hundred feet. That's perfectly acceptable too, however, the trade-off for the town is you get more towers. And the reason you, or you at least potentially get one. And the reason for that is because the co-location slots, the lowest slots on a hundred-foot pole just aren't very good. And so if you're expecting a carrier to come in and say, yeah, geez, great, sixty-foot slots for us, I think you're gonna be mistaken. I could be wrong, but that's the trade-off every town can make and that's the trade-off this town has made. And I would respectfully suggest to you, as I said in my letter. It's not fair on the one hand to say, we're gonna limit you to a hundred feet, plus there's a requirement, you maximize the co-location slots. You say that on the one hand, but on the other hand, now there's a potential issue because geez, those co-location slots may not afford good RF coverage. We can't help that, that's that was a choice the town made and and as I said. You know, we we just followed what the town said to do. The third question was how many properties will be provided with broadband service from this tower? The RF report we submitted talks about that, it provides coverage to I ninety-three and US Route Three as shown by not just our report, but Mr. Pegasus. It also brings coverage to Franconia Notch State Park as well as the roads and businesses in proximity of the property. The. This is the second site AT&amp;T has or will have in Lincoln if we get approved, the first site is on thirty-three Brookline Road. We show the coverage from that site in our RF report. And that site is very close to within or is very close to or within the downtown area. And it provides coverage to a large number of businesses and houses, it also covers the travel corridor of Route One Twelve and Main Street. What's happening here is exactly how a carrier builds out its network in rural areas of northern New England, exactly. They look for two areas to go to first, one heavily populated downtown areas, two major travel corridors. They've covered, AT&amp;T has covered the first base with the site at thirty-three Brookline Road. And now they're trying to cover the second base, which is the major travel corridor of ninety-three and and Route Three. This is how they do it. And as I said in the last time, the Brookline Road site does not reach this significant gap in coverage, again, that was confirmed by Mr. Pegasus. There was a question, I believe, from the scenic byway chair, Mr. Maitland. He said the applicant should provide a photo simulation of the view of the towers from the balloon off-ramp. And. I believe and the applicant believes our visual study gives a fair and accurate representation of the visual impact of this tower. With all due respect, in our opinion, when you get down to talking about highway off-ramps. You're really, really making it difficult to meet federal law requirements. And again, in fairness to us, you can't make these sites invisible. And we started off this discussion two or three months ago where people were really concerned about what I think everybody would consider is true visual view sheds. True view sheds that should be protected. We did the balloon test and I think there was a pretty fair indication that those are in fact not impacted by the site. We're now down to talking about an off-ramp off a major highway. I would note. White Mountain. Association submitted a. A letter with some pictures and I thought I had that. Up here that I could bring up on the screen, sorry. And maybe I did not, I apologize. Nah, I don't see it now, I'm sorry, I meant to, I meant to put hers up. But she had some pictures on there. I may be able to get that on there. In a bit, but. The pictures from the off-ramp at exit thirty-four, you're not gonna see that with leaves on. If you look at the balloon, it's covered by the trees. You can see it because the leaves are off. But and and I'm not quite sure if that's the same off-ramp that Mr. Maitland was talking about. But again, as I said, when you're talking about off-ramps, I think the applicant has met its burden regarding the visual impact or lack thereof. Mr. Maitland also said more information is needed concerning coverage. I think I've covered that base already. It's, Mr. Maitland also says that the visual impact of the proposed tower remains an important concern. Because it is so close to a state park in a scenic byway. I'm not gonna belabor this point, I'd say we are going exactly where the ordinance told us to go. If Mr. Maitland thinks that's too close to a state park. That's not something we can answer, we're going just where the ordinance told us to go. So that. Is my discussion on the submissions, the last submissions. I'd like to address the waiver request and the conditional use permit request unless you have questions about what I just said.
Oh, I don't know how, I don't know how we address questions because you're still on.
With. Oh, you mean the share. Like that?
There we go.
Sorry.
Up your back.
Yep.
I lost you.
Oh, okay, you have me now?
Yeah.
Okay.
So how do we, how do we address questions, John, do you want them addressed? Pertaining to everything you had just discussed? Or? How do you wanna do this?
You can ask questions about what I just discussed, or you can ask questions about what I discussed last meeting, I guess.
Okay, well. I have. Go ahead, Joe.
Okay, I'm gonna ask, anybody in the board who wants me to comment to go ahead, please.
Well, am I considered the board tonight?
Yes, you are.
Okay, then then I would, I have several questions and comments I'd like to make. John, when I looked at your engineering. Document on the tower. And I understand the the engineering speak that you were talking about. There's. They describe it as a theoretical anomaly versus what practical application would be. In other words, it is very hard, you know, so your engineers are looking at this monopole and they're saying. It's going at seventy-five feet, it's going to break and then it's only gonna be forty-five feet left on. That's gonna impact something, well, it's very hard in 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 theory to duplicate real-life conditions, we all know that. So I mean, when you design something, it doesn't always perform as designed. And that is why the town, in my opinion, has. Come up with the fall zone protection so that theory does not play into whether it will or will not happen. I mean. Practica, things that happen in practical life are 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 real-life conditions, no one can duplicate those, no engineer, no designer, no nothing. So we as the town have to say, well, if if the engineers are wrong and it doesn't perform that way, then we have to provide a safety. And the fact that there have been very few towers that have failed even substantiates that because no one has history as to how. They they will perform during a failure.
I disagree with that.
Pardon me?
I disagree with that a hundred percent.
Well, well, you can, but but if I allow you to speak, so why don't you allow me?
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, all right, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
I I was part parcel to the original author of the cell tower ordinance and I can tell you that the reason that we wanted. To put a fall zone in was to protect people, it was it was for safety. And. You can't. Engineers cannot duplicate real-life conditions. It's been proven over time and time again, so the only thing that the town can do is to say, okay. We need this, we need the safety in that, and that's why the fall protection is in there. You can take. I'm gonna say. As far as your. Coverage gap, when I take a look at the municipal wall.
Can I respond to the fall zone thing?
Sure, sure, yeah. I'll I'll debate with you, I guess if that's what the chair wants to do is go back and forth.
That's what it's all about.
Okay.
I understand you have other issues, but it sounds like you're leaving the fall zone going RF.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I I disagree a hundred percent on the fall zone, I would note a couple things. The, we have, I've done. Towers within tower height, forget fall zone, I've done towers in the tower height of Route Sixteen, Route Ninety-five. PSNH allows us to put those towers or has allowed towers within the, within tower height of their high tension lines. There's never been a reported incident of failure in New Hampshire on any of that and to the contrary, I think I said this last time. A number of years ago when we had that terrible ice storm.
The only thing was left.
The only thing that, the only thing that survived, literally, the only thing that people had was their cellphone because the cellphone towers survive. Now, I get your point about, you know, an engineer can't ever say everything that's gonna happen in the future, I get that. But. This is exactly how it's designed, this is exactly how it was worked and I would also know. I, well, that's, it has, I mean, if you can show me a tower that's failed in New Hampshire because of an ice storm or windstorm, I'm all ears, but they haven't.
So, John, my point to you is.
I'm not, Paul, I'm not done yet, and then I'm gonna shut up in thirty seconds, that's a fact. Number two, if you don't give relief from this fall zone, you are taking out half the permitted zone. We can't rent from the Spanises, they've made that very clear. They, the the other sites in that area, Parker's Motel suffers the same problem, the property to our south. Has the same problem, you have to go way down the road. Out of or almost out of AT&amp;T's search area before you can find a site that will meet the fall zone requirement. And.
I think.
Start going.
I think that. I'm not trying to fight the cell tower, I think that that, you know, when I take a look at the cell towers in town. That when I drive around, I see them coming everywhere, when I take a look at the fact that I ninety-three went through the Franconia Notch. I guess I don't understand some of the people who wanna, who who wanna save the the view shed. But I do care about safety and I'm telling you that I do not believe. That any engineer can theoretically tell you where everything's going to fall and be right. The the time that it. Happens and someone gets hurt, the time when we're all gonna look at it and say, you know what? We used to have this fall protection zone and the reason we put it in there was because we wanted to make sure that if it fell, it didn't hurt anybody. And, I mean, so I'll ask you, John. Are you willing to give the town some sort of a engineering certification that if the town falls, it will fall within a smaller zone? Because the town is going, what what the town's doing is, hang on here, the town has said, we will, we will protect you people within. By this ordinance placing, it will fall within a certain zone, the hundred-and-fifty, actually the hundred-and-twenty-five percent. Of this tower height. When we give you the exception for that and if it does not perform to that, that tower, and someone gets hurt. The town, I would feel terrible because I said, okay, let's give him a waiver. And it didn't perform because John, who knows where John's gonna be, but the tower could have fallen and fallen on top of a building that could have hurt somebody. And 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 everyone will say, well, you know what, no one's, no tower has ever, has ever fallen and hurt anybody, but this one did. I mean, we always hear that, so. We we can sit here and theorize and analyze all we want, but the reason we put that fall zone in there was to protect the general public. And I think that that is the hurdle. I think that's a protection for the local people, I think it's a protection for for safety and traffic and everything else. There's, there's a ton of property in Lincoln, there's cell towers that are out in the woods somewhere, I mean, we. If you take a look at the ones that are around, if they fell, they probably wouldn't hurt anybody, but. I mean, you know, this one is is very close to a to a building and I, the reason that we put that in there was was for that. I I do have some other questions, I don't know where you wanna go with it.
Can I address the first thing you just said? That that, when you you start off that last comment, Paul, by saying, can you, and I'm paraphrasing because I. What, but what you said was basically, can you make it so that it will fail within a smaller distance, that's what that engineer's letter does.
No, 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 what I said was, are you willing to have an engineer certify in writing to the town? Or listen to town of any liabilities, future liabilities, if this thing does not.
Paul, Paul, this is Peter Cook, I'm the applicant here. I I'm seeing criteria here that are being layered on us, that are not asked of anything else that the town does for any other approvals. Including what I was told last time was a very important criteria for retaining walls. And what the town requires as part of the retaining walls is stamped engineer plans that the that the walls are not gonna collapse. So we are are, you're you're layering on, in my opinion. You don't require any other project and any other, any other, and any other improvement that's proposed to the town. Because you don't ask the engineer for the. Because you don't ask the engineer for the retaining walls.
Gentlemen.
Unconditional guarantee to the.
Hello.
Let's, please be realistic about, you ask for, if you ask for engineered plans, we've provided engineered plans that provide the fall zone.
Gentlemen, before we answer everybody's questions, let's be acknowledged by the chairman of the board.
That's what I asked you in the beginning, Joe. How do you want to proceed with this? And you said, if you want to debate, we'll debate it.
Asking the attorney, but you go back and forth. Anybody else wants to ask, answer something, they must raise their hand and be acknowledged.
I'm raising my hand.
Continue.
Thank you. I understand, I understand what you're trying to say, Peter. I am not looking to ask you to provide anything else. I, I am, I am just giving you the reasons why I think the fall zone should be left in place, and it is there to protect public, the safety of the public. And that's what I think it should be. I also, I also have questions about, and maybe you can answer this. How many people at once would be able to use the new tower for cell service? So, in other words, if you're on the phone, how, how many people can be on the phone at once? More with the cell tower? My understanding, it, it, it's very few, but maybe you can answer that.
I, I, I don't have that information at hand. I, I guess my, my question is, we're filling a significant gap in coverage next to a major travel corridor. That, I mean, that's your answer.
Okay, so along with that, and I started to speak about this was, in the, Carol sent something out in a two thousand and ten municipal law lecture series, and I'm not sure how relevant it is given that this is two thousand and twenty. But it, it, it pretty much states that, in addition, an applicant is not entitled to perfect service with absolutely no areas of dropped calls or dead spots. So, that tells me that, you know what? We really don't have to have this. I mean, maybe someone could have hinted me. I mean, incidental dead zones aren't really that, that demanding of another tower. So, I guess I have to take, I, I guess I would have to ask for some clarification on that, maybe, is it still relevant?
I could tell you that what you just read does not deal with significant gaps in coverage next to major travel corridors. Trust me on that. I mean, you can ask Mr. Mal.
You're the applicant, so I'm not saying I don't trust you, but it would be nice to know if, 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 just because there's a few gaps in service, doesn't really mean that we really need to have another cell tower.
Okay, Paul, let's move on, ask the next question.
Hey, Joe, whoa, 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 Joe, Joe, please. Look, Joe, I'm a member of this board, and I deserve to be heard, and if you want me to ask questions.
You've asked it five times.
I'm, I'm still asking questions.
That's what I asked you. Get on to the next question, please. You've asked this one five times.
Peter's got his hand up.
Go ahead, Peter.
Are we smiling now?
Peter, you want to make?
Um, yeah, I'm looking at that same section of the municipal lecture series, Paul. And right afterward, it talks about an applicant not being entitled to perfect service with absolutely no areas of dropped calls or dead spots. Next paragraph says, if an applicant can demonstrate that there is a gap in service which to amounts to more than the incidental gaps or dead zones permitted by FCC regulations, the denial of an application may still not amount to an effective prohibition of service if there are alternative sites available. So, that's kind of a convoluted sentence that goes back and forth between it's okay to deny, and it's not okay to deny. But the key, I think, is the end where it says, a town can deny an application if, despite the fact that there are some incidental gaps or dead zones which are being addressed by an application as long as there are alternative sites available. So, that kind of goes back to whether, that goes back to whether there are or are not alternative sites available. And they did submit with their application this letter from, well, it's from Peter Cook analyzing the summary of alternative sites. And it concludes by saying that there are no alternative sites that are nearly as effective as this one, so.
Pete, Pete, yeah, Peter Cook's the applicant, so.
Right, if I, if I may, I would be wary, Peter, with all due respect, the, the alternative site analysis has been rejected by the FCC. It, that's from two thousand and ten. It's no longer relevant. And trust me when I tell you, you're good, oh, this is not an incidental dead spot. This is a significant gap in coverage. Those are terms of art. We have shown a significant gap in coverage, and you deny, oh, that's all I'm gonna say.
So, so my other, my, my last question is that, your alternative site, your alternative location for the monopole at the, the existing site was one that you thought was gonna put you on top of the knoll. Uh, but you didn't want to take that because you would have to cut trees down that had been there a long time. But when I look at the plan, I see that knoll, and that knoll truly, truly puts you closer to the interstate and the fall protection there. And, and to go back to the fall protection zone, if the current monopole fails, it may not hit. While it may not hit, if your engineer is right, and his theories are right, while it may not hit the building there, it will fall on somebody else's property, which is the state of New Hampshire. So.
Sorry, go on.
It's a, it's the right of way. So, the right of way that's there, the DOT right of way is right off to the left of, 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 of where that, your alternative location would be. So, I'm not sure that you, you, I guess, I'm not sure that you didn't choose that knoll because you didn't want to cut the trees, is what I'm saying. I think that.
First of all, I can assure you, that is one hundred percent the reason we chose where we're going, to save those trees, one hundred percent. Now, I see your look on your face. You can, you can discount what I say, but that's the truth, number one. Number two, I think you misunderstand what the engineer is saying, because you keep saying, if it falls, it's gonna hit somebody. But the engineer is saying is, it's not going to fall. It bends. It doesn't fall.
So, so let me ask you, John. So, if the tower's standing here.
Right.
And say, for example, that the base plate, just that something was done wrong, or a bolt fails, it's gonna fall. It's not, and, and during that fall, it may break. And, and that's what I'm saying. You cannot, you, no one here tonight can duplicate that type of theoretical anomaly. No one can. And that's a problem, and that's why we put that fall zone in there, so that we protect against any type of anomaly that may come along. And while I, like I said, I am not against cell towers, but I am, I, I do believe we should protect public safety. And I think that this tower goes against everything that I think about public safety and the way we should protect it. I'm done.
You said you weren't against the towers.
I'm not.
Well.
Peter Cook? You're still there? Is Peter Cook still on?
Hi, Joe, may I speak?
Say your name for the, for the record.
Hi, Victor Drewan with Green Mountain, the applicant. You know, Paul, our company does a lot of construction, and I, I believe this year we did somewhere in the neighborhood of eight or nine, brand-new towers directly at public safety facilities, either fire stations, transfer yards, and they're typically those. Uh, we did one in Carlisle, Plymouth, did a two-hundred-and-eighty-foot tower in Needham at their transfer station next to their building, South Kingston, Mass. I'm sorry, Rhode Island. Every one of these are built at public safety facilities, brand-new facilities. Uh, this is not including, you know, the cellular guys that we did work for. But, um, anyway, these, all these towers are designed in, in a way that they can, that, you know, they're basic, they're not gonna fight, not going to fail, and if they are. Uh, in the case of this one, we went to Belmont, and we requested the break at forty, you know, the bend at forty-five feet, so that we would have a gap between the building. We had about fifty-five feet total. I could go back and say, I want that gap thirty feet, so it stays. If it fails, it fails within the fence area. So, the purpose of that is that that very top section, and as it's outlined in the engineer speak, as we, as we call it, that that weakest spot that meets the code requirement, which is the EIA two-twenty-two, at that point, you will meet the basic code at that point. Everything else above that, we have to pay a significant amount to over-design the structure below it up until that point, so that that is done. So, when you talk about, you know, anchor bolt failures and things like that, this, I haven't seen, because we haven't got final engineering, but this, um, this tower will have, and, and will have probably nine or twelve anchor bolts in it. And, and essentially, it would take, you know, someone plucking that entire, you know, hundred-and-fifty yards of concrete out of the ground in order to make that happen. So, you're talking about hundreds and hundreds of thousands of pounds of concrete and rebar supporting this. So, um, you know, just, you know, keep in mind that those anchor bolts are way over-designed, and it is in the engineering report that.
I got that.
That they are, these things are already over-designed with a safety factor of three to one or four to one. You know, on top of this, you know, our company does maintenance on, you know, probably our worst site is, is obviously Mount Washington, where, you know, you hit hundred-and-sixty mile-an-hour winds. We do work on the Yankee Tower and the other three or four towers up there, the rooftops, the antennas and things. So, um, you know, in these high-wind events, the biggest failure is debris, you know, Cannon Mountain. We've replaced, uh, the RF transparent plastic in the, uh, in that building many times for the state. But it's typically from, you know, the wind picking up a two-by-four and blowing it through a piece of plastic. You know, my, you know, the reality is, when we look at this site here in Lincoln, you know, regarding the knoll, and I think the Mr. Maitland picture that he had, or going north, taking that exit and showing the balloon behind the, behind those trees. If we cut those trees, you're gonna see not only those balloons, but you're gonna see the entire structure, because those are gonna go away. So, when you come up and you take exit thirty-four A, you're gonna see the sign, and you're gonna, all those trees are gonna be gone, and you're gonna be looking at the entire structure, um, and not, you know, not just the, not just the very top piece hidden behind the, you know, behind the twig, so.
I, I understand that. That's what, that's where my comment was.
But, yeah, so, I mean, my goal would be obviously to keep it, if, if possible. I can adjust the engineering. That's how I got to the forty-five feet. And I could adjust it further if that met the board's, you know, satisfaction. And, um, you know, this camera poles and everything else up and down the I-93 corridor that are, you know, twenty, thirty feet off, you know, off the actual travelway. So, you know, those, we, we do those as well, and as we talked last time, there's, um, there is, um, you know, a specific engineering that goes with them so that they shear off if they're hit by a car and things like that, so.
So, so I only have, I have two kind of questions. Um, one is, I did not see anything in the submittals that deal with inspection and maintenance records and how those are performed, and, and who takes care of those. And I have a question for Peter. Peter, if, if the town allows a variance, or a special exception variance for the height requirement, does the town have any liability if it fails, uh, not as performed, not, not as designed?
Want me to answer that first, or Mr. Drewan, do you want to answer the maintenance first?
Well, can I, I don't think the maintenance things were required to be submitted.
I'm asking for that to do the safety factor. If we're gonna give a waiver, I think we should have something that, that states how often it's gonna be inspected and what those will be.
So, so a couple things. One of the things that we've been doing recently in our sites is we've been adding video cameras, because our biggest maintenance issue is people, uh, you know, coming in vandalizing, stealing copper, things like that. So, um, you know, so we have a video surveillance system at the site, so we know who's coming and going. But we do annual maintenance for all the sites. And I know that, you know, that AT&amp;T, they have FCC requirements where they maintain the RF records of anything, any of the tenants, any FCC licensed tenant would, has a maintenance log of their own. Their technicians usually visit the site on a monthly basis, so those guys are in and out. But our typical maintenance, other than going in, making sure that weeds and seeds are cleaned up, there's things like that, um, you know, is, is annually.
Okay.
No, Paul, I don't think the town is exposing itself to any liability if it decides to allow the requested increase of tower height to one-hundred-and-twenty feet from one-hundred feet. Towns, generally speaking, have a tremendous amount of immunity from discretionary decision-making such as this, especially when the board is diligent in its review and applying all of the applicable criteria and taking its time, as you guys are doing here.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I yield. I'm done. I have my answers.
Okay. Is Peter Cook still on?
I, you know, I just got a text from him. He, he said he.
I am.
Oh, you came back.
I'm at.
Okay, sorry.
Still there.
You want, you'd like to answer anything you just talked about?
No, I think Victor certainly, um, answered any, any questions regarding the construction side of things. He's, uh, that's his expertise.
Any other questions from members of the board?
Yeah, Joe, I've got a couple. You, can you hear me?
I can. Go ahead, Steve.
Yeah. It seems like the hundred-foot height restriction has been working pretty well. And, um, I think there was a reason for it, and I'm beginning to think that these guys are it. It's, all the other towers in town seem like they're working. I don't hear anybody crabbing about them. I don't know why all of a sudden these guys come in and want a hundred-and-twenty feet. It just doesn't make any sense to me. I just can't see memorializing the notch with a hundred-and-twenty-foot hole. It's just not right, and I don't want it to be my legacy. And I just don't really understand why you have to take control of the wooded area. It seems like you've been holding those trees hostage ever since we first started talking about this. I don't, I'd like an answer on that, too, if I could.
I, I don't even know what to say. Take control, take, I mean, we're trying to protect the trees. We're trying to put a no-cut easement in there. This is done in many situations.
The trees, trying to cut the trees if we don't get, get what we want. It's like the trees are being held hostage here.
No, that's, sir, with all due respect, it's not what I'm saying. It's not even close to what I'm saying. If, if that's, if, if that's your position, all I can tell you, all I can tell you is what I've said before. The no-cut easement is to save the trees. The spot we're in now, in order to save the trees, is about twenty feet less in ground elevation than the top of the knoll. So, by going where we are, we lose twenty feet of elevation, roughly speaking. So, we're asking, as allowed, under your ordinance, I'm sorry, I'm still talking, as allowed, under your ordinance, we're asking for that twenty feet. I, I don't see why this is such a tremendous difficulty for people to understand. I really don't.
It's the wrong place. That's what it boils down to. It's the wrong damn place. I don't care if you put five more down the road, but.
We're permitted use, sir. We're permitted use. What do you mean, we're in the, it's, it's the wrong use, or it's the wrong spot? It's the wrong spot?
Hey, Steve?
You know?
Excuse me.
You're friggin' bullies.
Excuse me.
What's that?
I'm not even gonna respond. I'm not even gonna respond.
Steve? Steven?
What?
Are you asking a question or making a comment?
I guess I did a little bit of both. Sorry, I'm done.
Continue. I just wanted to find out. And the other members of the board. Tammy?
I, I am, would rather see, um, if, if this is built, to see it built at the bottom where it's proposed to be built and at a hundred and twenty feet, than see them move twenty feet up on the Knoll, cut all those trees, and build it a hundred foot, feet tall. We give them the extra twenty feet, they'll stay down low. We'll keep the trees to block it as much as they can. It's, we're not gonna stop them from building if we don't give them the other twenty feet. We're going to just make them move it higher up the hill. So they gain the elevation in the ground instead of gaining the elevation with the pole itself. It doesn't make any sense to say, no, don't give them the twenty feet, and let them cut down all those trees and move up the hill. I'd rather them gain the twenty feet on the pole than gain the twenty feet on the ground. That's.
Just a minute. Any other members of the board?
Just a minute, Paul.
I'm a member of the board. You asked.
No, just a minute. You ever been to talk? I'm giving somebody else a chance. Anybody else have any questions? Paul?
Tammy, uh, even though it's a permitted juice, it does, it, it still has to meet certain criteria, and if up on a Knoll, it may not meet that criteria. So permitted juices are, you're right, are allowed, but they need to meet the criteria. So I'm not sure, um, that your, your, your comment about where it's situated is relevant. Um, again, I, to me, if it was up on a Knoll, it doesn't matter. People are gonna go by that in a fleeting moment. They're not even gonna see it like they don't see any of the other towers that are here. But, you know, as I said, my concern is safety, and I, and I rest my hand on that. I, I've seen enough engineers be wrong. I've seen enough of them be right, but my concern is safety. Mr. Chairman, I, I would make a motion that we open up the public comment.
Just a moment. I have a question for Peter Mallier. Peter, you still there?
Yes.
Got a question. If they didn't go to one-twenty, would they have to come before the board?
Yeah, uh, yes, it still would have had to come before the board.
A hundred-foot tower?
Yes.
This one is good. Just want to clarify that. Okay, thank you.
You have a motion, Mr. Chair, for open public comment.
I, I'm not done addressing the criteria yet.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, we have three waiver requests, uh, based on some of these comments. Quite frankly, I think the board has already, or at least some of the board has already judged this, but I'm gonna go through our criteria anyway. The first waiver request
Excuse me, excuse me. I, I'm sorry, Peter, but you did, I mean, John, you just made it, you just made a statement that is incorrect. And you should not make that. We have not voted, and I don't think it's appropriate for you to say that there's people that have made their decision yet. And I take exception to that.
I was just called a bully.
Let's continue.
I was just called a bully by Mr. Knowsworth, and he basically said he's not gonna vote for this under any circumstance.
He did not say that.
Well.
And neither did I.
I didn't say you did. He did.
Okay, Joe, I'm gonna let's get on to the subject.
You made other comments that have made it pretty clear you're not in favor of this waiver request that I'm about to present. So maybe I'm wrong, but
Maybe you are.
Based on the, based on the comments I've heard, I, well, I will present the rest of our application. We'll see where the chips fall. But I think what I said about Mr. Knowsworth, these comments was pretty accurate. Um, the first waiver request is a waiver request from the tower, uh, fall zone. Um, there are three criteria we have to show, uh, in order to get that waiver. One is a strict adherence to the requirements. The waiver is not required to effectuate the purposes of the ordinance. Two, strict compliance will create practical difficulty and unnecessary inconvenience. And C, and please pay attention to this, strict compliance could potentially cause a conflict with the Telecommunications Act of nineteen ninety-six and FCC regulations thereon. Now, we've talked a lot about the fall zone already. I'm not gonna belabor this point other than to say most fall zones don't include structures on the host property. They go by property lines. Yours has structures, the word "structures" quote-unquote, so we have to deal with the landlord's structure. The landlord has granted us a, a, a letter saying, or submitted a letter saying he's fine with the project as proposed. We've submitted the stamp engineer's letter about how the tower buckles, and, um, regardless of what other people may think, I will just say that, uh, the sole motivation for putting the monopole where we are, or we're asking, is to save those trees for visual cover. That's it. You can believe it or not, but that's why we did it. For those reasons, we think that the ordinance requirements and the purposes are well-protected. And I would also say that the federal telecommunication act and the FCC regulations are gonna weigh in heavily here if we have to go that route. That's all I'm gonna say. Uh, the purpose of federal law is to remove barriers for these sites. So I think we meet the waiver requirements, uh, for the fall zone. Um, the, uh, second waiver request was a waiver from, uh, Site Plan Regulation, which requires engineering calculations used to determine stormwater drainage requirements. Uh, as we discussed last time, uh, the stormwater management ordinance does not apply, or requirements do not apply this application as we do not disturb more than fifteen thousand square feet or fifty percent or more of the square footers of the lot. Uh, just to refresh people's memory, the area of disturbance is just under twenty-nine hundred square feet, which represents about six point four percent of the lot. Uh, the compound, once completed, will be virtually flat, uh, and it will not significantly interfere with or increase stormwater drainage. Uh, we feel that, uh, requiring the calculations in this situation would be an unnecessary respent, expense, uh, and burden on the applicant, and therefore, um, we ask for that waiver. Uh, the third waiver should be very non-con, uh, not non, um, controversial. Uh, it's the waiver that says as a condition of acceptance of the application is complete, we have to submit a bond. Uh, we ask to make that a condition of approval so that we don't have to submit the bond at the beginning of the process. We submit the bond at the end if and when, uh, we get approved. Um, and there's no harm to the public or the town handling it this way. Uh, the only difference is, uh, the applicant does not have to incur the significant expense of purchasing the bond, uh, if it's not gonna get approved. Uh, and finally, um, the conditional use permit standard. Um, the three criteria for that is the intent of the ordinance will be preserved. Uh, second, a modification is reasonably necessary and appropriate to further the purposes of this article, and a modification is necessary to allow permission to the telecommunications service in the area. Um, again, this ties in with the visual impact. I'm not going to belabor this point. Uh, we are only asking for an additional twenty feet. It is a, it, we are absolutely permitted to ask for this uh, in the ordinance. Um, and, uh, I believe it was Ms. Hamm, uh, who just stated the reasons in her, well, I won't presume to talk to her, but she just stated the reasons. That's why we're asking for this, uh, conditional use permit. We think the additional height is minimal. Uh, we think that there's very little visual impact from the site as a whole, but certainly because of that twenty feet. Um, and actually, putting twenty feet more on the top of the pole will allow better co-location slots at the bottom. Um, and so for all those reasons, we feel that, um, uh, the conditional use permit should be granted. Uh, the only other thing I would say, Mr. Chair, is there is a number of standards under your ordinance's telecom section and the site plan review regulations. We haven't really talked a lot about them, uh, during this process because I think they're also pretty, uh, non-controversial, and some of them don't even apply to us, uh, dealing with pedestrian traffic, parking, wastewater and sewer, things like that. Um, we did a detailed project narrative, uh, where we addressed all of those standards. They're on pages four through seven in the telecom section, um, uh, of the, uh, project narrative. I'm sorry, the telecom section criteria is in pages four to seven of our application. The regular site plan regulations are in pages eight to nine of our application. Uh, we stand on our written submission. Uh, this will save everybody thirty minutes of meat going through those and talking about them. As I said, I think all of them are pretty straightforward. I don't think there's any controversy about any of them, uh, uh, apart from the ones we've been talking about in some detail. So to conclude, uh, we believe that we should be granted the relief of the additional twenty feet. We should be granted those waivers. Um, and I will be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Chair, you have a motion still.
Do you have it to make it again?
I'd like to make a motion that we open the public comment.
Do I have a second? I'll second it. Motion, uh, motion open public comment. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Aye.
Aye. Any other comments from the audience or participants?
Ron's raising his hand.
I can't see if he is an auto.
Ron Beer's raising his hand, Joe.
Ron, go ahead.
Okay, I have a question. Maybe, maybe it's more for Peter, but I believe I heard that the property owner um, has signed a waiver or something of any responsibility if the tower collapses on his building. It, can he legally do that for the tenants in the space that he rents in that building? Or would that have to be from the tenants?
He can only do that for himself.
So that, that could pose a problem if he's got renters occupying that building. Where does liability fall if the tower does fail?
I don't think there's any liability, liability for the town, as I said earlier, just because municipalities are given such, uh, a tremendous amount of, uh, immunity from discretionary decisions like this. So, um, I, I don't see a significant risk to the town.
Yeah. I just, just wondering, because I know, you know, a lot of times LLCs, their immunity from like OSHA regulations, stuff like that, is strictly for the officers listed on the LLC. But if they have subcontractors working for them on questionable site, then they could be fined. You know what I mean? Fined. But the officers under the LLC um, don't get any penalties. So I just wondered about that as far as that property is concerned.
Um, there have been a lot of, uh, documents circulated. I don't know that I've seen a waiver of liability. Is that, has that been submitted? Is that a document that's been submitted, John?
No, I thi, I wasn't gonna say. I, I think what Mr. Beer is referring to, and what I attempted to refer to, was the letter from the landlord saying he consents to the waiver request for the fall zone, which would be, um, what, uh, if anybody wants to look at it, uh, it's exhibit exhibit number eleven in the application book we submitted to begin with back in August.
And that, that covers the tenants that rent from him within the walls of that building?
It consents to the requested tower height of a hundred and twenty feet and consents to the granting of the fall zone waiver.
So the owner of the building, which could be affected by a tower collapse, is not objecting to the applicant's requests for a hundred and twenty-foot tower in that spot? Um, and a, uh, I guess a twenty-five percent increase in the fall zone? Hundred and twenty-five percent to a hundred and fifty, uh, hundred, hundred and twenty-five feet to a hundred and fifty feet?
No, I, you threw me with that last part.
Yeah, that was, I didn't say that.
He's sending, he's sending a waiver request that gets to a hundred and twenty.
Well, I guess my question is, is he empowered to be able to speak for his tenants also?
No.
I will say, since we're, we're talking about this, I'm not sure there's any ordinance, and, and I understand what, um, Mr. Bowden said before. I'm not sure I've ever seen an ordinance that says you have to be, that the fall zone includes the landlord's structures. They all virtually go by property lines, um, and structures on third-party properties, not the host property itself. This is, I have to be honest with you, it's very unusual. Just, I put that out there for this, and I would also know for, as, to get to Mr. Drewan's point, these poles go up next to police stations, fire stations,
I've seen it. I've seen it.
All over the place. I mean, they don't say, wait a minute, you know, this is unsafe.
No, I just had, had that question, you know?
Yeah. But I think that, but I think what Mr. Drewan said ties in with, with our position, certainly. I mean, you know.
Any other questions from the audience? Anybody else on there? I can't see, Ron.
OJ has his hand up.
I have my hand up. Joe, this is OJ.
Go ahead, Ray. OJ.
I just wanna make two points regarding this. Number one, speaking on behalf of the Whale's Tale, um, we, I accompanied the person taking the pictures that, that day of the balloon test, and there was absolutely, uh, no effect on the view from, from the Whale's Tale at any spot. Um, so it, that, that, to us, that's, that's irrelevant. Um, second of all, not speaking on behalf of the Whale's Tale, but just my, my, um, personal, um, thoughts is, is I gotta say that what, what Mr. Springer said regarding the fall zone is a hundred percent in line with what we had discussed with the potential vendor coming or wanting to come to the Whale's Tale. That number one, the, the proposed tower site was, was, uh, in a location that the technical fall zone would have been, um, next to one of our buildings that, that is inhabited. Um, number two, that, that our vendor, um, also stated, and we also looked into this in the, in the process of negotiating it, that virtually no other town includes the host property in, uh, in the protection zone or fall zone, that it's typically there to protect a butter's, um, from being in the fall zone unwillingly, um, to a property, an adjacent property that, that puts up a cell tower. So I will, I will, um, just state that that is, again, in full, um, uh, um, agreement of, of what we talked about and what we were pursuing and what we believed in, in, uh, looking at a cell tower for our site. And then the, the, the third point to that fall zone is that, that, you know, typically, um, a tower's not gonna just fall over. Uh, that as Mr. Springer pointed out, that it's gonna be some event like significant winds, and he talked about, um, uh, yeah, Top of Mount Washington type thing. You, we gotta be realistic here in, in assessing risk in that, that if, if there is enough wind to bend that engineered steel tower, that all those trees that are around this site or any other cell tower in town is gonna provide much bigger risks to, uh, people around them. Uh, there's, there's, there's a bigger risk from blowing debris, falling trees, everything else besides the cell tower. And, and I think that, that in, in looking at the fall zone issue, and that's all I'm speaking to, is that, you know, you need to consider what, what risk this poses in comparison to other risks. And when you're saying, you know, that the town's number one thing is safety, and we can't do this because of safety, if If someone is in that building nonchalantly hanging around when the wind's outside of 100 miles an hour plus. They're gonna be concerned about trees and debris, not a cell tower. And that's, that's all I have to say.
Tammy, do you have something to say? Tammy, do you have something else to add?
No, nothing.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we close public comment.
Have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Right. Public comment closed.
I have a suggestion, uh, Paul, if I may, uh, before, I know you put your hand up as well.
That's okay.
Joe? May I make a suggestion, Joe?
Go ahead.
Um, there's a requirement under the telecommunication, Federal Telecommunications Act that this board make a decision within 150 days of receiving the application. That 150-day period expires on January 21st, and I know from the Pines discussion that you have a meeting on January 20th. Um, I know that you've, uh, had kind of a robust discussion tonight. Uh, it sounds like some of you received some documents pretty recently, maybe even today, that you perhaps haven't had a, a chance to thoroughly review yet. Um, would it make sense to continue this one final time to the January 20th meeting? And I might also suggest that between now and then, we schedule a consultation with legal counsel, which would just be me and the board. Um, and talk about some of the legalities of the Telecommunications Act, uh, in relation to this application. Just so that when you do make your decision, you're, um, you've had an opportunity to talk about the. Federal statute and the state statute in relation to our local ordinance.
I would tend to agree there. Everybody else? Go ahead. Paul?
Yeah, um, Peter, a certain reason why we can't go into non-public session tonight, um, and discuss that?
Uh, no, except I don't know if Ron, uh, I guess, has the capability of doing that.
He does.
Okay.
Right, Ron?
Well, we, we could have everybody but the board and Peter sign off, but I don't know how we'd get him back on. Are you looking to? Are you looking to do a non-public and then reopen the meeting or?
No, no, no. I, I, I just want to go over it tonight with Peter, what the legalities may be. Um, and then we could meet, um, prior to that, 60, that clock running on, on the 21st. Um, to determine where we're gonna go. I, I don't know that belaboring this makes any, any sense, but, uh.
Well, what I, what I could do, if you wanna go into a non-public session, um, I could make Peter the host. And then you can make the motion and enter into your non-public. I'd make Peter the host. Everybody would sign off, or you'd remove them, and then you'd hold in on public. Without me present, obviously.
Do we have to sign off, come back on again?
Nope, you'd, you'd stay there. I'd, I'd make Peter the host. Um, you basically make a motion to go into non-public per whatever R S A. And then, you know, make a date specific, I guess, that you're gonna continue this meeting and that, um, then everybody would sign off and you, you all would stay on with Peter.
And, and, and the only reason I say that, Peter, is because it, it, if we're going, i- i- if we're going to. Um, ta- take a look at some of the information that may not have had a chance to, um, review. It might also be nice to know what the legal ramifications are, so we can make all those considerations at once prior to having the next meeting.
That's fine. There's also an earlier meeting in January, too, right? You have two meetings in January?
Um. Yeah, I mean, we could also, I mean, Ron, could, could you also put us in that, put everyone else in a waiting room and then we could do the non-public and then come back in? I mean, is that, is that a possibility? You're, you're, you're muted. Ron, you're muted.
Sorry, I got used to holding down the spacebar when I was talking. I forgot. Yeah, I could attempt to do that. We just have to confirm that I got everybody into the waiting room before you start talking.
Well, I mean, I, I, I don't wanna bu- belabor this decision, but I mean, if everyone can, it seems like we've got all the information except for a little bit that I did. I mean, the stuff I didn't get tonight and everyone just voiced their opinions. It's just, I think all we're missing is the legal ramifications there.
Which has a hand up? I think she may have a question.
I can't hear you, Tammy.
Which has a question? Which Burbank?
Uh, I have a, I have a comment, not a question. Um, several of, I've heard several people tonight say they just got quite a bit of material today. Would it not make sense to go with Peter said and? I'm just, I'm just saying that, that you can review everything. I mean, there was quite a bit of discussion tonight, but to make sure you've looked at everything, I. I mean, it's not, not up to me, but that's an observation.
I think my, the easiest thing to do might be to make a motion to continue the public hearing to one of the two January dates. Have everybody sign off except for me and the board and Ron, if he has to stay on, uh, for purposes of being the Zoom organizer, and then, uh. We can have a consultation with legal counsel. It wouldn't even be a non-public session. Uh, it would be a non-meeting. Consultation with legal counsel is a non-meeting.
Right.
If you've already ended the meeting and continue it to another date, the meeting's over. So if we meet. In a few minutes after the meeting ends, once it's continued to a January date, we can talk for a few minutes and then come back in the, on the January date and resume the meeting.
Peter, if we're going to non-public, the, the minutes can be sealed, non-meeting, can minutes?
In a non-meeting and a consultation with legal counsel, which is a non-meeting, you don't have to take minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Go into non-public session and then come back out of non-public session and close the public session and continue to January. That's, that's different than a non-meeting. That's a non-public session. Sorry to get so in the weeds with the right-to-know law, but.
Well, well, that's okay.
That's the, if we go into non-public session, we have to cite the provision under 91A and go into non-public session, take minutes, vote whether or not to seal the minutes. Come out of non-public session, um, and then close the meeting or continue it to a later date. If we just end the meeting by making a motion to continue it to a January date, everybody else gets off, then we. Legal counsel, which is a non-meeting with no minutes.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we go, that we end the session and go into a non-meeting with public, with counsel, town council.
I'll make the motion. We continue this to January 20th.
Is there an early January date? No, Pi- Peter had said there were two dates in January.
Lisa, are you there? Do we have a meeting on the 6th as well? The planning board have a meeting on the 6th as well?
Um, unfortunately, the material that I have with me, I don't have that for January.
Do we have a, we have another meeting this week, don't we?
Oh, wait, OJ knows.
Next week.
OJ knows.
Ron, maybe Ron can check.
We have, we have a planning board meeting on January 6th, and we're having that meeting because it's the last day, I believe, we can introduce. Have the first public hearing on, um, proposed, uh, zoning amendments. Okay, so we have to have that meeting on the 6th for the purpose of, of a public hearing. So, so to fit this in would, in my opinion, would not be a problem at all on that date.
I will amend my motion to continue this to January 6th.
Thank you.
I have a question for Lisa. Are you on?
Yes.
Do we have another, we have another meeting this month, don't we?
We have a working session.
Couldn't we use pilot working session for this? You have it over with?
No, you can't, you can't vote in a working session.
Right.
Non-public session, you know, it's not voting in anything. You're just discussing.
No, Joe, you gotta vote if you're gonna vote to accept or not.
January 6th should probably be okay.
What was this? Excuse me?
January 6th.
January 6th is probably okay with your folks, isn't it, John?
I'm sorry, I was more, say, January 6th, if that's the earliest date, yes.
So did you want me to amend my motion that we. Go into a non-meeting and continue this till January 6th?
Uh, I think Tamara already made a motion to continue this public hearing to January 6th, 2021 at 6:00 PM.
Correct.
Are we gonna go into a non-meeting after this or?
Is that app, yeah, uh, well, you guys will stay on when everybody else logs up and we'll talk for a couple more minutes.
Then I'll, then I'll second Tamara's motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So moved? We continue the session till January 6th?
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
All right, Steve, don't hang up.